Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Scotty Cameron. I'm a sophomore at Walpole High School. Uh, Walpole High School has been very busy this fall, from sports to student council. In regards to athletics, teams are competing in their very competitive leagues in order to get into the playoffs. The boys soccer team has a record of four, twelve, and two, and is playing Bishop Fien on Saturday. The girls team is two, eight, and two, and play Milford on Friday. Additionally, the field hockey team is nine, oh, and one, and is hoping to stay undefeated against Milton on Monday. Furthermore, Walpole High School's swim team is currently two and six as they look into the sectionals race in the next month. Also, the football team is three and three, and hopes to win against, uh, Milford tonight. Additionally, the volleyball team is currently five and ten, but they hope to bounce back by taking a win tomorrow against Bishop Fien. Furthermore, both cross-country teams are doing very well this season as they plan for their upcoming divisionals race in November. Besides sports, Walpole High School has been very busy with other activities. The Walpole High School Speech and Debate Team have planned a novice tournament last weekend and donated the leftover pizza to the Walpole Police and Fire Departments. Additionally, students recently took a day off of their classes to take the PSAT. Afterwards, students had a discussion about race with some Metco faculty and past students. Also, faculty members are finalizing their international trips for their upcoming trips in April. Students and faculty will travel abroad to Italy, Panama, and Peru, where they will get to experience and learn about different cultures. Furthermore, the Walpole High School Chorus and Travel Chorus are performing tonight in collaboration with Foxborough High School's Orchestra. Today, the Walpole High School Green Team collected trash for the area surrounding the high school. Also today, the Student Council prepares for C-MASS, the Southeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Councils meeting, which they will be held at the high school tomorrow. The theme is pink to raise awareness for breast cancer. The Walpole High School Student Council is hosting these twenty-four other schools, and will be leading them through different activities to promote leadership and teamwork. As you can tell, Walpole High School is very busy and will continue to be busy, especially as the term ends this Friday. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Representative Cameron.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your countless hours of work you put into making the school as great as they are, and thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Scotty. Moving along into new business, we have out-of-state field trip requests, as, uh, Mr. Cameron, uh, kind of introduced, uh, for Walpole High School to Peru in April of 2020. We have, um, Ms. Kate Bacon. Come on up.
Good evening. Um, I'm here this evening to request your permission to take Walpole High School students on a nine-day tour through Peru. The trip is run by local student travel company EF Education First, and travels first to Lima and then to Fusco. Walpole High School has an established relationship with EF. Foreign Language Department has run trips to Spain with EF over the last two years. Our Science Department has also taken students abroad with them to Ecuador, Peru, Dominican Republic, and Tanzania for service learning opportunities. I've heard nothing but wonderful reviews on the E-, uh, of EF regarding these past experiences. We currently have seven students committed to travel, one being here with us tonight, um, and are hoping to recruit five more. The plan is for myself and my colleague, Richard Sturgis, to accompany students during this April vacation trip. Students will have the opportunity to explore aspects of the indigenous Incan community. Themes such as culinary traditions of Peru and daily life in Peru will be explored. Along with assuring students' well-being, Mr. Sturgis and I will serve as models and reminders to the students that they should be engaging in continuous communication in Spanish. The benefits of travel experience with, uh, will last much longer than the students' high school years. Students will have the opportunity to put what they learn in the classroom, here in Walpole, to use in real-world setting. Additionally, students will gain invaluable cultural perspectives and impactful experiences that happen through travel abroad. Our hope is that they realize that their ability to communicate in the target language is a key which will unlock countless opportunities in the future, and which will inspire them towards becoming global citizens. Thank you for your attention to this request.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Questions on the committee?
Ms. Galan.
Just a comment. I think we're lucky to have teachers like you who are willing to take the time to do something like this. And so the people understand the students pay for it themselves.
Yes.
Or the families.
Yes.
And the students, correct?
Yes.
And, um, you know, I'm always glad when you come with enough lead time so that they can, you know, save up some money and contribute to it.
Yes.
Um, do you have any kind of fundraising planned? Or are you gonna wait and see who your students are and go from there?
Uh, we haven't done any in the past. Um, one parent asked about it, and I said, "We would be open to," you know, "ideas for it," um, if the students have any, or, you know.
I would put it on back to the students, too, at their ages. You know, that there are plenty of things that can be done if they want to.
Right.
And, um, but that's not your responsibility. It's more theirs.
Yeah.
Great. No.
Ms. Nixiel.
Um, just as long as we're on the topic of fundraising, I think because we offer so many wonderful trips, and you mentioned service learning and language learning. Um, I wonder if there's a fundraising mechanism where everyone can join together and kind of shoulder the responsibility of organizing something, and any student participating in any trip might be able to benefit. And then it's not, you know, solely on you and your colleague.
Right, right.
To do for this small group of students.
Yes.
Might be something to think about in the future, 'cause I hear about these trips, and they're so wonderful.
Yeah.
They're such great opportunities, and, um, all the opportunities is possible to be able to participate with.
Yes.
Maybe that's what we can think about from forward.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Goff.
I just think, from a global perspective, this is a great opportunity, and I really appreciate your hard work. I know all the time effort and energy goes into organizing and then, um, implementing the trip, so I recommend to approve it.
Very good. Motion to approve the trip.
Second.
motion by Mr. Green, second by Ms. Muccini. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero. Thank you very much. Have a good time.
Thank you, Kate.
Moving right along, we have ELA reports. Shannon Finley and Lauren Colton will give you an ELA curriculum update and a report on student progress. Answer any questions. We have Dr. Finley. Okay.
Always nice to talk. We're visual. Well, thank you for having me. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Shannon Finley. I'm the KQ5 ELA Curriculum Coordinator for the district. Um, I thought I would start tonight by highlighting a few of the goals, the progress of the goals that I had shared with you all last September when I first started with the district. Goal number one being to create a literacy curriculum team to review curriculum materials and resources to support our shared vision. And so just to highlight the progress made on that, last January, I created a literacy curriculum team that was comprised of administrators, reading specialists, classroom teachers, and other specialists throughout the district. And we worked together to create a shared vision statement in terms of aligning with the strategic plan of the district. We researched curriculum that would help support our vision. We visited local schools that were also implementing the curriculum that we were interested in. And we also researched and interviewed literacy consultants to support the implementation of the vision. Oh, yeah, so that was. That was the one. And then, um, the second goal that I had shared last year was to collaborate with the literacy leadership team in order to not only create a vision, but to create a strategic plan in terms of acquiring necessary resources and professional development to support the teachers in the implementation. And through those two goals and those steps, we, as a team, decided on the implementation of the Lucy Caulkins Writing Units of Study. We have partnered with Claire Landrein, who is a published author and literacy expert in the field of balanced literacy and the workshop model to deliver professional development to our district in terms of job-embedded professional development as well as half-day workshops. In addition to her support, I am also supporting teachers in collaboration cycles, both in the classroom modeling lessons, co-teaching lessons, planning with teachers, and also working closely with the reading specialists in our district to build their capacity as school leaders, not only to share their expertise with kids, but also to share their expertise with teachers as well. And then, looking ahead to this year, the bulk of my work will be collaborating with teachers, being in classrooms, supporting the implementation of the units of study, coordinating the job-embedded professional development with Claire Landrein, so that her, when her time is here, is most valuable to teachers in terms of what they're looking for support in, continue to support the reading specialists in building their capacity as school leaders, continue to support the administration in terms of carrying out our vision, and then starting to look ahead to 2020, 2021 in terms of professional development and resources. So I thought it would be great if we could have some writers share some of their writing. So, um, Ellie Cummings is gonna be our first student writer. She's a kindergartner at Fisher. The first unit of study in kindergarten is really getting kids to see themselves as writers, and she is going to share her informational book about pumpkins.
How to carve a pumpkin. Step one, get a pumpkin. Step two, get tools. Step three, get paper towel. Step four, get a knife to carve up this stem. Step five, scoop the yakiseta out. Step six, carve.
Our next student writer is Evelyn Roth from Old Post Road. She's in second grade. First grade through fifth grade, the units of study are all narratives, so she'll be sharing a personal narrative.
Yesterday, I went to dance class. I practiced gymnastics. First, we did a warm-up. Then I did my first backbend kickover. First, I bent it back till my hands touched the ground. Then I jumped until I kicked over my legs. I ended up standing. Everyone clapped, because not a lot of people could do it. I felt very proud.
Next, we have Luke Welter from Elm Street School in third grade.
We got to the big snowy hill. I got on my saucer sled. My papa pushes me with all his might. I yell, "Ah!" I go flying off the jump. The sled comes out from under my butt. I crash into the freezing cold snow. It feels like I've been sitting in the snow with shorts and a t-shirt for fifty years. "There goes the sled," I say. Plunging after the sled, it's getting farther and farther away. I grabbed the sled. It looked, it looks like I had to walk forty miles up a snowy hill. So I did. It took like ten minutes because I kept dropping the sled.
Our final writer is Elizabeth Healy. She's in fifth grade from Boyden.
I skipped ahead of my parents and had a look around. It felt like I had wings and was levitating above the pavement instead of darting down the narrow entranceway to the Hollywood Rip Ride Rocket in the heart of Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida. "Can we go on this roller coaster?" I asked. "Sure," replied my dad. We all got in line. I could barely wait for the time when we would reach the end of the snail-like increments of movement in the line. When we finally reached the yellow and scarlet cars, my mom, my dad, and I all piled in. The assistant snapped the safety belt snugly around our waists. "What am I thinking?" I realized. "Well, too late now." The workers instructed us to choose a song to listen to through the mini-speakers by our ears. All the happy and terrified screams filled my ears. "Whoosh, here we go," I cheered. I looked over at my mom across from me and my dad behind me as we started the vertical ascent to the tippity top of the mountainous hill. The train teetered then zoomed down for what felt like an eternity, then soared up into a spinning loop-de-loop. It flew through a hole in a fake building, and then, poof, a bright light lit up the dark tunnel, signaling our picture had been taken. This track was the craziest, wildest, and fastest I had ever been on. I was screaming with delight so loudly I didn't know I was screaming. I was disappointed when it was over, but I knew I would be on again soon. I stepped off with shaky legs in a memory I would never forget. "Again?" my dad asked. "You know me too well," I replied happily. My dad and I got back in line quickly. When we reached the front, we slid into the front row. I chose my song just as the train pulled away from the platform. As we tipped forward on the hill, I thought to the time when I would gleefully collapse onto the plush bed in the hotel room and reflect on my flawless day. Later, as we strolled back to the hotel, memories of the day cascaded like a waterfall through my mind. The waterfall rearranged itself into a movie resembling my day that I would, I would never forget that movie, ever, ever.
Yeah, I have a question. I just wondered what, um, what literacy means? Like, what's the definition of literacy? I mean, we sort of know it's reading and writing, but just sort of what it means more holistically?
Yeah, pretty much everything involves, I mean, everything involves literacy, in my opinion, but focusing primarily on reading, writing, spelling, word study, is primarily the umbrella.
And then, all the programs you have, I know there's like Foundations and Lucy Caulkins, and those all sort of balance and work together to promote literacy both on both sides?
Yep, so kindergarten, first and second grade is, Foundations is their core phonics spelling program, whereas Lucy Caulkins is the holistic writing and reading program in terms of seeing, having kids see themselves as writers and really teaching the writing process.
Thank you.
Further questions on the committee? Ms. Muccini.
It's not a question, but it was wonderful to see the progress through the years and the descriptive sentences, even from kindergarten on, and really thinking about the process of how something happens from step one all the way through to the end. So, it's terrific.
Ms. Galan.
I also love when students are here. It makes the work we do real and relevant. So, thank you, students, for coming. And I was thinking, maybe the students and the teachers might want to take a picture with you up here, because it's a big night, and you guys will be able to see yourself on TV if you get cable TV. And if you don't, figure it out. But this meeting is being recorded, so it's your chance that people will hear your stories. Yeah! So, I think we should take a group picture, for sure.
All right.
Ms. Nixiel.
Just before the question. Thank you so much to Ellie, and Luke, and Evelyn, and Isabel. And Isabel, I, I think the copy that I had of your story was a little bit different than what you read tonight, and that shows me how hard you worked at revising it. And revision can sometimes be the most difficult part of writing something, 'cause you just want to be done with it. And I can see how many times you tried to make it just a little bit better in so many spots. So I just want to congratulate you on that. And to all of you, you're doing wonderful work. Nice job.
Quick picture?
Sure, come on up.
Okay.
You can walk us out. That's fine.
Oh, yeah, it's happening.
Even the Welton one, he's working so hard to use a descriptive language to describe.
You're on show right now.
Yeah, I didn't see her.
Bill Hahn's got it. Well, thank you very much. Now we have Lauren Colton.
Just, yeah. So we'll give you a minute to clear out.
We'll give you guys a minute to clear out. Thank you so much for coming again. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now you know how we feel.
Well, Lauren, we still love you.
Apparently, high school English isn't as exciting.
Now we have Lauren Colton, our English Director, Department Chair, to give us an update on grades six to twelve English.
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank, I'm especially appreciative and happy that Shannon's here working with the elementary school. And I know the elementary school teachers left, but I, um, a big shout-out and thank you to their hard work and the work they do with teaching literacy, because, um, our jobs would be that much harder if they didn't have that foundation from the elementary school. So, we appreciate it all the time. So I wanted to talk a little bit about when Mr. Hahn and I were talking about this, and actually, since he's been moved into the position, talking about looking at the future and where we want to go. We haven't done a real, um, in-depth examination of the curriculum since the Common Core has been implemented, which was back in 2011. That's when we got the new frameworks. Since that time, although we haven't had, um, an examination, a real overhaul, we've done, had a lot of changes. And I think that everybody at the high school, the way we teach is entirely different for the English department than we did, um, before 2011. I'd say the most significant changes in reading are that we've incorporated more nonfiction reading. That was a big push from the Common Core. And also looking for, um, more diverse and inclusive backgrounds for the reading. We think that both of these things are really important. One, we think that as the community of Walpole becomes more diverse, it's important for students to be able to read about stories, read stories where they're represented. And also for our students who, you know, who maybe not have that diverse background, they can learn so much, and they can learn empathy. We've talked a lot about pride and that be the core values, and empathy being one of them. But reading stories about people from around the world really helps students, as they grow, learn about themselves and learn about the world around them. And the, and the nonfiction has also given us a new lens looking at, um, traditional works. For instance, just today, I was in one classroom. I was in Ms. Ty's junior class, and the text they've been working with is Macbeth, which is a traditional text, the canon, you know, has been around for a little while. But what she was doing with it is she was studying it and having students studying, studying the ambition that Macbeth has by looking at more contemporary people. And previous to this, they had read a bunch of other articles. I wasn't there for that. But today, they were working with a speech from Martin Luther King, his mountaintop speech. And she was having the students, she was asking the students to compare and contrast Macbeth's ambition to what they see with Martin Luther King. And students listened to the speech, and they were annotating, and then afterwards, they were discussing. And one student, I wrote this down, compared Martin Luther King's speech. He said that Martin Luther King's ambition was different in that it was selfless. And then he went on to compare that to Macbeth and also Elizabeth Holmes from the Thorens debacle. And he, you know, pulled her in also and said that, you know, where their ambition was driven from greed, and that was their downfall, that Martin Luther King's was a selfless ambition. And I just thought it was so powerful, and that this idea of looking at the traditional texts through nonfiction makes it so much more relevant, and lets students see why we are reading those things. In addition to the reading, the writing, I would say that previous to this, that almost all the writing we did was strict literary analysis. You know, the, what's the significance of the green light kind of thing? And now we have students writing about Martin Luther King and Elizabeth Holmes, and, you know, Macbeth, and pulling it together. And that's a direct result of the Common Core and the switch from the Common Core. And it's what the new MCAS is asking students to do. So, we've been doing this for the past ten years or so. Well, almost ten years. And I think that our students are really very comfortable with it. I think it also allows for more authentic writing. We ask students, you know, for their ideas and their opinions. It also came about when students, with the increase of the internet, it was harder to get students to write original papers when you could look up the meaning of the green light, and Spark Notes had it for them. Whereas if you bring in a, an article and you compare it with the text, it's, you know, students are more motivated to give an authentic, real response of theirs. Other significant changes, we definitely teach more structured class discussion. That has taken on a larger focus. We want students to develop that authentic academic voice in their writing, but also in discussion, integrating technology beyond word processing. And I just included in here, um, a student sample. I didn't bring a student in. Had I thought of it, I would have asked her to come. But this is, um, from last year. A student had put this together. The class read Cat's Cradle. And then, to bring its relevancy, they studied the war in Yemen. And this is a website that, um, last year, a junior put together. And you can just sort of see where this all comes together. This is the website that she designed. And over here, she has some of the, um, information from her studies, you know, some of the research that she did, where she got all the information. Down at the end, we always have them cite all their sources. So she, first she talked about the process of what she did, and then all of her work cited in here. She connected it to Cat's Cradle. She did all the summary work, the background on the author, and all the things that she came up with. And then she also had created, while they were going along, she created a blog so that she could find all the connections that she found. And she talked about the religion in Cat's Cradle and comparing it to the Civil War in Yemen, and how the, this religion can be a source of conflict throughout history. So, um, this was just an example of student work that kind of pulls together a lot of what we were just talking about. I talked about bringing in more diverse works. This is just a sampling of some of the things that we've added in the past probably two or three years, most of these works. Some of them are textbooks, some of them are articles that teachers use, pull things in, um, to make books and things more relevant. We also, in the past few years, have added some of our resources. We have a subscription to The New Yorker. One of our teachers uses The New Yorker regularly in class. No Red Ink is an online platform for grammar, and vocab.com is an online platform for vocabulary that we use specifically with the freshmen and the sophomores, CP2 level. It helps them track their progress, and they can get the directed work that they need. Oddman is a program that we just added a subscription to this week. It's an audio of current nonfiction articles from major publications. I haven't used it yet. One of the teachers, Mr. Allen, asked me to purchase that, so we'll see how he incorporates that into his classes. We have high school curriculum maps. We, as we update our maps, I would really like to move toward a more of a focus on skills and content instead of necessarily by book, instead of thinking of it as a unit of Macbeth, really focus on the skills and the content with a list of suggested resources. But that then lets teachers bring in more current things and make connections. I know you don't want to look at all of our curriculum maps, so would you want to look at one of them?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll show you the, I'll show you a fresh, I tried to give you a sample here, but, so this is our freshman CP1. This is one that Ms. Kerr has worked with. The other thing that we've been doing at the high school is as new teachers come in or as they have a new prep, I pair them with a mentor teacher. And for the first year, I really encouraged them to teach pretty much side by side. I don't want to say lockstep, but really, you know, working together. And so this is a result, Ms. Kerr had been teaching this for a few years and Isabella came in last year and taught with her throughout the year. And now, actually Ms. Kerr is out on maternity leave and Ms. Isabella is mentoring for the long-term sub, who's been working on it, so. So you can see that Ms. Kerr and Isabella did it by skill. This, the text that they were using was the short stories, but students will be able to. So again, picking out what students will be able to. And then down the bottom also including... So the writing focus for this one, the content would be more about the clear analysis of devices used in best quotes to support conclusions. This doesn't have any of the UBD, UBD units. I don't have all of that, this is just sort of the curriculum map, how they would go through. But you can see as it takes, takes them through the year. So then the next one they do is analyze literary terms in a novella and she uses Mice and Men. Some teachers don't use Mice and Men, some teachers use Animal Farm. Again, when you focus on the skill rather than the work, it lets you have that a little more variety. I know that's probably not the most interesting thing, so. Did you want to look at any of the others?
The sophomore.
The sophomore, sure.
Because I know what he's doing.
Scotty, do you have Mr. Allen or Mr. Solomons?
Yeah, I have Mr. Allen.
You have Mr. Allen, alright. So again, Mr. Allen had been teaching the sophomore honors for lots of years. And then that film festival thing has kind of gotten in his way. And last year, Mr. Solomons came in and taught along with it. So, Mr. Allen created this curriculum map and Mr. Solomons is teaching it very similarly now also. What unit are you guys on, Scotty? So you probably started with short stories.
Yeah, we just finished, yeah, we just finished the...
Did you recognize any of these stories? Did you do any of these ones?
Yeah, we did the Minister's Black Veil, The Mask of the Red Death, and The Blue Bouquet.
And, and you see next to them the focus, the literary focus. So as they read The Mask of the Red Death, they focused on mood characterization, irony and symbol, and how an author creates them, how they use them to reveal theme. Do you want to talk about the theme of any of those? And then you did two, so are you still on separate piece right now?
Uh, no, we finished a separate piece.
Oh, man. Three to four weeks. Alright.
Don't go too far, Eddie, we don't want to give him a leg up.
So right now you're exploring how authors create themes within short stories and organizing and developing topics within essays. I don't see what the, oh, so he uses lots of little texts with that, with those. That look familiar? He might have changed around the order in which he does some of these things.
Yes.
Yeah, so the curriculum maps aren't meant to be a direct, like, you know, you have to do it in this order. We talk about what skills we want students and experiences we want them to have had by the end of the year. So, sometimes teachers don't necessarily go in the same order, based usually by what books are available. And then, so again, we have all of our curriculum maps, we have a shared drive that all the teachers have access to with other resources. The writing expectations for, at the high school, while we don't necessarily have the exact same essays, we do have common expectations, we have common language and directions and rubrics. Again, you probably don't want to look at all of these, but I just wanted to show you that whether you're looking at a freshman essay, and this is two different teachers, the rubrics, you know, they might not look the same at first, but they're all going to have the same expectations. We talk a lot, you know, what do we want students to be able to do by the end of the year. Revision, somebody mentioned the revision process. Revision and reflection are an integral part of the writing process. We have writing folders, some teachers use electronic, a lot of teachers still use the old school manila folder because it's just a nice organized way of keeping track of it. I know Mr. Allen has moved toward some standards base and he has you guys track your own progress, right?
Yeah, like a Google slideshow.
Yeah, so he, you know, has little stickers and everything and they track their progress, but he's broken it down into the skills. Teachers often share folders and use PLC time to align grading practices. So a lot of teachers move the folder up with the next student, you know, look at their work. And in PLC times, we oft, often grade, do some like common grading to make sure we sort of are aligned in our practices. Our focus at the high school this year, the things we want to look at in our curriculum, what are our strengths and our needs? I think you saw some of our strengths. I think we know that some of our needs, we need to really take a look at our vertical alignment. We want to make sure that, the other thing we want to make sure is that as kids change levels, we have kids who come in and they might start in a CP2 level and they move up to a CP1 or an honors. And we have had kids, in fact, I one time had a kid who started out freshman CP2. By the time he was a senior, I had him in AP honors. So, we want to make sure that with that vertical alignment, that they're getting the skills they need. And it's not really a difference of skills, what it is, is there's more support and scaffolding in place for the students as they need it. We're also at, looking at the MCAS 2.0. Last year was the first year we saw what it looked like. And so we want to, you know, over the next couple of years, make sure that we are preparing our students, that MCAS isn't throwing a curveball at us, that we're preparing our students for it. And are we preparing our students adequately for college? And that last part, do all of our students have opportunities to learn important skills and content? Again, that a vertical alignment, making sure that everybody's having all those opportunities. Grades six through eight, similarly hasn't had the same curriculum review. The past couple of years, one of the things that I've talked about with the six through eight teachers is, especially with the sixth graders, and this is where we're really grateful that Shannon's on board, is they talked about, you know, they wanted to know that idea of sitting and having that conversation about skills. We often have the ninth grade, the eighth grade teachers come up to the ninth grade and observe classes. So they can see what are those kids, what are the expectations? And our sixth grade teachers for the past couple of years have wanted to have that kind of information from fifth grade teachers. So, that's something that we've talked about is, you know, trying to align that and get, you know, a nice solid grasp on that. We have, in the past probably ten years, we've really worked to align the curriculum between the two schools and make sure that the student experience from the two schools is similar. So that when they come into ninth grade, students from one school aren't at an advantage or a disadvantage. And I think we've done a very good job at that. And again, the vertical alignment between the middle school and the high school. The high school teachers say uniformly that the kids come in now, they're prepared, they know what to do. And, you know, there's always a, a change. Middle school isn't high school and nor should it be, and the rigor is a big change for kids. But I think that that's an appropriate thing, you know. I don't think we necessarily want our middle school kids doing more homework. So, there's an adjustment period, but I think that we've, you know, got a good grasp on that. We do have common curriculum for the grades six through eight, we use core texts. Do you have one you want to look at?
Seven.
Seven, there we go. Uh, maybe not. I had access when I put these on, let me see. Alright, never mind. Oh, might be because I shared it with Mary, I apologize.
I don't get that.
Yeah. I'll get Mary access. If you could look at those. And in the middle school, we do have common assessments. Each term, each grade does a common assessment. Grade six, we focus on characterization. Grade seven, we focus on theme. And grade eight, we focus on figurative language. And we took these from actual old MCAS. We, the writing is modeled on the MCAS open response. We use the MCAS scoring guide, which I probably won't have access to. Sorry. I should have shared those with Mary. But we also use monthly meeting time to establish benchmarks and align grading practices using those MCAS scoring guides. So, by the time they, they take it, the kids are very familiar with those, the MCAS language and the scoring guide and the expectations. And again, Bill and I have talked a lot so far about where, what we're looking for. Our middle school does need a really deep examination. We have talked about how to go about this, what the next steps are. And what we'd really like is for an outside perspective to come in and do a full audit and evaluation of our written and instructional curriculum. I am in their classrooms, I'm down there all the time, but the middle school is not my strength. So I, you know, I go in and it looks great and I see what they're doing, but I would love to bring in somebody from the outside to give us an outside perspective. Also a review of our novel and short story texts to make sure that we're culturally proficient and diverse, you know. One of the things that happens is we find a great book, like a couple of years ago they bought The Hate U Give, which is a great story. But it doesn't, it's not really very meaty, it doesn't have a lot of literary analysis. We added it to our summer reading list, it's a great book, you know, our lit circles, but it's not really a core text that, you know, we want to teach. So we want to make sure that we bring in texts that have that complex, complexity as well as the diversity. We want to align the grade six curriculum again to ensure that proper transition from the K through five, writing curriculum. And then, once we get an outside audit, we want to analyze the results and determine what our next steps are. And that will come definitely with some professional development and some, some research and development for teachers. Be happy to answer questions for people?
Sure.
I'd be happy to get Mary some permission so you can see those.
I know, and just knowing my colleagues, I'm sure a lot of them would love to poke around in these rubrics. Questions from the committee? This is Ms. Donizio.
Thank you for sharing all this detail with us.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'm just curious about one of your essential questions, about whether or not we're preparing students adequately for college. I guess I'm wondering, how do you determine that? What do you look at to decide if that's the case or not?
Actually, one of the things is, anytime I see a Walpole alum, the first question I ask is, did we prepare you for college? And almost universally I get yes. And I tell, I tell students at the CP1, at the CP2, at the honors level, you're going to go to college next year and you're going to know how to write. And I said, you're going to be shocked that other kids don't know how to write. And in fact, I just, last week saw one of our graduates, Jayvon Jackson, is that his last name? Jayvon? Yeah. Jayvon, who is at Fisher School. And I said to him, Jayvon, were you prepared to write? He goes, Ms. Colleton, they don't even know how to write themes, they don't know how to write topic sentences, they don't know how to write thesis statements. So, he felt very prepared. Other than that, what, we have a lot of teachers who look at college curriculum, look at what they're doing and try and bring some of the work down and going to professional development. One of the goals I would like to have for the high school teachers is I would like every high school English teacher over the next five years to get training or go to an AP seminar, either AP Language or AP Literature Seminar. Because even if you're not teaching the AP level, it's good teaching practice and we can bring it down to all the, all the students on all the levels. You're welcome.
So I would say having two in college, they definitely...
Were they ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Particularly Ben, he was like, you know, at least I felt like I didn't have to, you know, bring my writing skills up. He said, I felt so confident.
Good.
And he said he was surprised, even with the, like, one of his good friends was a valedictorian somewhere else. He said, I felt like I had to peer out of his papers. Yeah, yeah, he really, so I thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
Give them a leg up and help them feel confident.
I don't know that they necessarily love it when they're in Mr. Allen's class, but they appreciate it when they're in college.
That's where Christian is right now, right?
They'll get through it. Anybody else?
Well, thank you. First of all, I think our English department is just something to be really proud of, so.
I am proud of it, thank you.
You extend our thanks to the, the whole department because you do a great job. I don't want to put you on the spot, Scotty. No, I'm going to Scotty actually. And I'll come back to you because I'll give you a second to think. But the fact that you're here and we're talking about English, if you feel, we really do want to hear from students' perspectives. So, if you feel that there's anything that, you know, construct, any kind of constructive criticism, looking back on the last couple of years or where you are, something that you didn't feel prepared for, now, you know, if you have anything, that's great. And if you don't, that's okay too.
No.
Do you want me to give a minute to think and I'll come back?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. I have two other questions, Lauren. You know, I've been here for forever and I've never seen a curriculum map, so thank goodness for showing it to us. We're really appreciative of that.
Well, I tried to show it to you, sorry.
No, but, but if, and because there are parents who are interested in being able to see that information, is it available to parents or is it more a shared teacher thing?
You know, a lot of what's on it is probably not written in a way that parents are necessarily going to know and understand. I mean, we have it all on a shared Google Doc. As we prepared for NEASC, learning how to, you know, actually the reason the high school ones were all visible is because we had to go back and share permissions. But the middle school ones, you know, we hadn't, we hadn't done that. There's probably a, a way, but that is not my strength, knowing how to do that.
I would add though, my son's a freshman and I would say what I saw from the curriculum map is fairly similar to what was shared at the open house. So it might not have been shared in that same way.
Right, yes, there's probably a lot more on there that they don't need.
Yeah, I feel like we talked a lot about those same concepts and so I had an understanding of what you shared. So I think Nancy, maybe some of that through the, just the curriculum outline that they share with parents would be similar.
And it could be posted somewhere so that the people who, who, you know, are looking for something in, in March would have something to go to. I've just had people ask me for it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that we could actually probably put something together on the webpage. You know, we have descriptions of what happens at each level and each grade. Sometimes I feel like you put too much information and people are like, well, how come you didn't do that? You know, and as I said, sometimes we do things out of order. And, you know, the, the idea of bringing in a relevant text if something comes in and you want to use it, you know. The, I don't know if anyone had read this, the New York Times Magazine in August put, put together this unit on 1619 all about...
I have.
It's wonderful. And, you know, I know that a couple of our teachers changed their plans last minute, like, alright, well, we got to use this, you know. So, as I said, the map isn't necessarily, you know, you have to go here, here, here. The expectation is teachers are going to cover all the skills and all the content by the end of the year. There's flexibility in how they get that done. And sometimes it's based on book availability, you know. I was planning on doing Catcher in the Rye and I get to the book room and there aren't enough. Alright, well, I'll do this next. But, we could certainly work on doing that and putting something together on, putting it on the...
I wouldn't put it at the top of your list, but I, there are a number of times I've been asked for it and I just never, never know where to put people.
We could put something on the, like, on the school webpage under the English.
Thank you.
Go to go.
Yeah, thanks Lauren.
Thank you.
And, you know, really highlighting the importance of that literary analysis and writing for different purposes and, and audience and also tying in that authenticity so we can, you know, continue to push for 21st century learning and thinking. And then also mentioning finally the consistent expectations so that we're providing equitable opportunities for all our students to, to learn and excel.
Yeah, and, and you and I have talked about that and the importance, you know, it, I don't want to say what text that they read isn't important, but they don't all have to be reading Romeo and Juliet at the same time. And you don't actually have to read Romeo and Juliet, you could read Macbeth, you could read something else, you know. It's as long as, as it's engaging, as long as it's complex, and as long as a teacher finds ways that their students can access the text.
And it's great to see the audit for the middle schools because of all the work you're doing at the elementary and the students getting to the middle school. So, you're after my own heart. And I'm not saying that because I'm a former English language arts teacher.
All set? Thank you.
Now, Scotty, if you, if you want to anonymously forward your concern, give an answer to that.
Scotty, you know where my office is.
Like, the only comment I really had was, I definitely agreed with what you were saying about like the curriculum because I definitely saw like what I learned from the past years and how it like really lines up with what you had written. Like, with that said, I thought, um, English has been one of the tougher classes I've had for the past two years for myself and for my like friends. But I still think that like, when you, when I look back at my like essay journal and you see like the essays from like the beginning of ninth grade to now, it's a very big change, so thank you.
Yeah, and, and we take an opportunity and we really want students to go through that reflective process. that reflective process and see your own growth, right? It is, it makes you feel good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goff. Moving right along, our next order of new business is Fall Town Meeting Report and Appropriation.
Sure. So I thought we had a very successful Fall Town meeting Monday night, and good news, it was all done in one night, which I know is not the norm. And, you know, we're pleased to say that in terms of Article Five, the $400,000 for the Wapo High School building study was approved, along with the technology infrastructure, $120,000, the Chromebook purchases, $420,000. And just to note that technology, infrastructure, and Chromebook purchases, that's a three-year program, so we'll be able to, to maintain that for three years. And then the $50,000 for the security camera upgrades at Boyd and Elm and Wapo High. And then also, under Article 10, the Medicaid reimbursement and the parking receipts were approved, and that's just usually something that's the norm for year to year. But it was great, I just thank everybody for being there, for, for their support, and thanks to Mike Frischa and Bill Hahn and Stephen Imbush and Ann Arpin for being there and being prepared to present if needed, and I, I thought it went very well.
I know we're, we're so grateful for throughout this entire budgetary process leading up to the Fall Town meeting, whether it be at Capitol Budget, at the Finance Committee, at the Board of Selectmen, the support we received from our colleagues in government on the other committees was really heartening, and, and it's exciting to have this opportunity to continue to fulfill the commitment that this committee has, has made to address and examine the needs of all of our secondary school buildings. I know, everybody on the committee is a town meeting member, so any other thoughts?
Very smooth.
Excellent, very good. Seeing none, moving right along, a vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Wapo School Committee and AFSMI Council 93 Local 1957, Secretarial and Clerical Unit. Mr. Frischa?
It just attached as the memorandum of agreement between the Wapo School Committee and the Secretary of Clerical Union, and the Secretary and Clerical Union voted to approve this memorandum of agreement, so a ratification by the school committee is being requested at this time.
And we all got that a few days ago, had the ability to review it. Any questions, comments in terms of the committee? Seeing none, may I have a motion to ratify?
Motion to approve the secretarial and clerical unit contract.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Muccini, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Next, we have a vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Wapo School Committee and AFSMI Local 93, uh, Council 93 Local 1957, Custodial and Maintenance Union.
So attached is the memorandum of agreement between the Wapo School Committee and the Custodial and Maintenance Union, and the Custodial and Maintenance Union has voted to approve this memorandum of agreement, so again, a ratification vote by a school committee is being requested.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, may I have a motion to ratify?
Motion to approve the custodial and maintenance contract.
Motion by Ms. Breen, second by Ms. Muccini, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Moving on, old business, MSBA update. Dr. Goff?
Yes, I have a couple of announcements about MSBA. So first, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, in conjunction with the Massachusetts Certified Publicing Purchasing Official, they held a collaboration on the story of a building that was at Gates Middle School in Situate, and I believe Nancy Gallivan attended Jen, along with myself, Mike Frischa, and Patrick Shields. And it really was a great day. It was designed to meet the school district's project-based learning educational program at Gates Middle School and all their innovative approaches to teaching and learning. And what they really did is focused on demonstrating how the design follows their educational vision. They discussed how they educated the staff and the community, and they also discussed the best practices of how to work in collaboration or partnership with the MSBA to ensure a successful project through the process. And we were fortunate enough to tour the school with the architect, the building team, and several students, which was awesome. And we learned about the design decisions of why they did what they did, and again, it really related, it went back to their educational vision of education. And then the district also shared their insight to any operational challenges, and were able to answer questions that we had. So it was really a productive, I don't know Nancy, if you have any, any feedback of, of that day? It was a full day.
Yeah, it was, we were there pretty much all day, and it was overwhelming at times. It was just a lot of good information. I think the thing that I came away with is the need to fine-tune a vision that our faculty really believes in. I think that, you know, it was, it was clear to me that the people in Situate took learning to a new level with the combination of really evaluating where they want education to go and making sure the building supported it. And it just made me feel like if we're going to invest in these buildings, we need to invest in the, the educational vision just as much so.
Yeah, every piece of that building went back to their vision and instruction and teaching and learning, and the professional development that was really invested throughout that.
And they're a community that's similar to ours. They spend just about the same amount that we do. They had, it was, it's always interesting to listen to other people, and they had troubles getting their, their project approved. They had hurdles that we will have to expect too. It was interesting.
It was a great experience, I'm glad they invited us. And the good news is, at 3:00 PM today, I received a phone call from the MSBA, from Jennifer Flynn, and I'm happy to report that we are invited to the MSBA board meeting on October 30th, so that's next Wednesday at 10:00 AM. It's exciting news because that means we're one step closer to the feasibility study. We were originally slated, I believe, December 11th, and because we were able to get all of our requirements in ahead of schedule, I believe that, that's one of the reasons that we were invited into the October 30th board meeting. So the only thing I'll need from the school committee is to let me know, she said Monday morning, but if you can let me know, maybe by tomorrow afternoon, you know, who would like to attend, I need to give her a list. It's a, it's a public meeting, and if anybody would like to speak.
Excellent. Further questions on the MSBA update? Seeing none, superintendent's report.
All right, let's move again.
Excellent.
Just a few things, we've had several informative community meetings since our last school committee meeting. There was a good turnout for our documentary viewing of Screenagers. Middle school students also viewed the movie as well. The youth and vaping information session was also well-attended. Wapo Cable taped this presentation, so hopefully people will be able to continue to view it. I'd like to thank the Wapo Police Department, Chief Carmichael, Dr. Lester Hartman, and Dr. Randy Schuster for holding the session. The Wapo PD also held a presentation entitled Critical Incident Response that included an explanation of the ALIS program. There were only a handful of people who attended, but the people who were there, it was a really good discussion at the end of the presentation, and since we understand that everybody has a busy schedule, there was a lot to, to pack in with these community presentations, Wapo Cable, Cable was kind enough to tape that as well. Mr. Hahn held the first English Learner PAC meeting of the year. It was nice to see familiar faces, as well as some new ones. Do you have, Mr. Hahn, anything?
Yeah, just a quick update, our, our agenda, our primary agenda item was the continuation of the adult education English classes for our EL parents, many of who signed up last year when you piloted the program. Last year, the program ran for six weeks, twice a week, and the, the parents there asked if we could run it a little bit longer, and potentially throughout the entire year. So our goal this year is to run a 12-week program, run it once a week, and then we've just started to look into partnering with the Wapo Library or other community members to offer a more comprehensive program to support those parents. This was definitely the, the priority of our agenda, not just simply because these adults want to learn English, but these adults want to learn English to better support their children. And that is why it is so crucial that we are supporting them in this endeavor, and that we are part of ensuring that they can do this. And I think that's what's exciting about it, and really appropriate for us to do as a school community. But I also think it's important that we partner with other community leaders, and that's why we just had our initial discussion just this week with the library director, and we'll look elsewhere, but I wanted to announce that today in case other community members who are watching this would be interested in supporting or being part of it, and I'll keep us updated as we move forward with that. And if I could just say one quick word, and then, as I said, I wanted to make a commitment to each, or at least once a month, talk about our new staff, because of how important it is that they feel supported, and your update on their progress. We met for our monthly new staff orientation, we meet once a month as part of their yearly transition orientation process, and we shared our high lows and read an article about being successful in your first year at a school. Many of them talked at great length about the support they felt from their colleagues and how important it was to, relevant to the article we read, to find your PAC. And the challenge, the article said about spend 24 hours with saying nothing negative, remaining only positive, and how much that meant to each of them and the support that they received from the community, and how they felt like Wapo, Wapo was the place that they could do that. And also in alignment with our social-emotional learning strategic plan goal, I'm take, doing something a little bit differently, I'm asking, I want to share this here with all, with everyone now, we're, we're creating a recipe book, so I'm asking each new staff member to share one recipe that they can cook on a busy school night, that's the deal. So not like a complex, you know, takes several hours on a busy school night, because, yes, we are invested in the social-emotional learning of our students, but it is crucial we're invested in the social-emotional learning of our staff, and no one has it tougher than a first-year teacher. So I thought it'd be fun to collect some recipes from just that group and to maybe create an informal cookbook. It's probably not going to be like the prettiest of cookbooks, I'm being honest, and it might all be digital, but I figure, yes, but if you're going to be, we'll have some fun, so if any...
You have a kindergartner who can tell you how to carve a pumpkin.
Exactly. That's a pumpkin down, down there.
That's another fundraising opportunity. I think you could maybe...
Oh, don't, don't.
I think you could market it to parents, too. What's so good on a busy school night? There's a, there's a big audience for that.
Yeah, there is, there is, that's true. If you all would like to contribute, I welcome it, and that might be a fun way for me to share that the school committee is invested in their success as well, so thank you.
That's great, thanks, Bill. So in terms of talking about teaching and learning, in school visits these past two weeks, I was able to spend time at Fisher, Johnson, and Wapo High School, meeting with principals and visiting classrooms. Yesterday, I actually walked around with Mr. Imbush, visiting robotics class, science classes, and some math classes, and we just need to, you know, continue to keep that focus on teaching and learning. It was interesting in one of the robotics class, watching the students and their, their engagement, and the teacher approached one student and said, "Okay, do you know what you're going to do now?" And she said, "Um, I don't know, trial and error, trial and error." So it just shows that, that perseverance and that we learn by failure, and it was just, it was nice to see that, that grit and to, you know, continue to, to move on. I think that, what's the book that we mentioned that we liked, The Gift of Failure? It's a great book, if you haven't read it. So we, we, it was, it was a great, great visit yesterday at Wapo High School. Last week, it was great to watch Wapo High School football win over Braintree and to chat with some, some alumni that was there. My hope is to get out during the afternoons next week to watch some of our other games. As Scotty mentioned, I was impressed with our novices who prepared for their speeches and debates this past Saturday. It was, it was hard to believe it was their first time in this venue. I was impressed with also the veterans on the team, the way they not only provided the novices with encouragement and helped them prepare, but just the way they welcomed and assisted students throughout the building, they're, they were excellent ambassadors. And also, as Mr. Cameron mentioned, tomorrow morning, we have the Wapo High School Student Council that's hosting the Southeastern Mass Association of Student Council Conference, so Mr. Hahn and I will be there. We look forward to welcoming those students, reps. I thought it was great that, Scotty, that you mentioned about the PSATs and after the exam, those, those informative sessions. Kathy Lopes with courageous conversations, and she's, as you mentioned, the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion of MECO. Another session, they had three sessions, another one, I believe, was Chief Carmichael on vaping, and for the third session, students viewed a video from the Wapo Film Festival, was it on cell phones? Was it, um, Hung Up?
Yeah, it was on, like, yeah, Hung Up.
Was it, okay. And I know that, that other people have seen it, Nancy, you, you've mentioned it before, so I'm really glad that they were able to show that to the students. Productive use of the afternoon, and I want to commend Wapo High, you know, for having those during the school day in which all the freshmen, the sophomores, and the juniors take the exam, because, you know, not every high school is fortunate to do that, and I'm glad that we continue to do that. And finally, Mr. Hahn and I had our first walk with the Supers. It was a small group, but it was, was good. I think we even counted the, the gentleman you said that was walking.
Around the track, he's with us.
He was there, man.
It, it's designed to promote community engagement and wellness, and, and we had a lot of positive conversations about school, about the town, it, it just was, it was really positive in general. We are going to schedule another one, it is scheduled for Friday, November 15th, anytime between 8:30 and 9:45, so you don't have to come for the whole time, you can come for a portion, you can stay for the entire time. I see Dr. Cameron's out in the audience, we could have a walk with triple Supers, right? Three, three Supers there. And this way, we, we try to make it in a way so that even for elementary parents, if they drop their children off and, and want to come for a portion of a time, they, they can, so it's scheduled for all community members, so hopefully it will grow.
Excellent stuff. I'm sure Cameron's going to steal that and I'll take it back, they've joined us.
Great.
Good stuff. Moving right along, subcommittee activity.
We've had a lot of subcommittee activity, and we'll continue to do so. So I'll ju, I'll just quickly start, we had, September 26, we had the Special Education Subcommittee where we reviewed and just went over the Wapo High School Program Review that was back in 2017, and Dr. Crowley talked about the gains that we've made thus far and the progress. And Dr. Taft Farrell, as, as he mentioned, at the beginning of the year, they're going to be conducting a program review at Daniel, Daniel Feeney Preschool, it's a perfect time for it. And then also, Kristen gave, it's on a useful website now, it's called Understood.org, great tools and support for partnering with, with schools, students with, with special needs, so it's a great website, so thanks for that, appreciate it. On October 1st, we had the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee meeting where we're looking at, you know, aligning my evaluations with goals and also aligning corresponding indicators, and we're going to have another meeting next week regarding that. On October 3rd, we had the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting, we actually had one today as well. And what we've done is we've focused on specific curriculum areas that'll be presented by school committee throughout the year. Our next meeting presentation, we focused for curriculum in November, the school committee meeting will be high school math and an MCAS presentation by Bill Hahn, the, the high school math will be David Pesejo, and that will be followed at the end of November by elementary, middle school math, and then hopefully our digital learning coaches. So we'll be taking, taking a look at that. And then our final one, we had a budget workshop on October 10th, which we discussed Fall Town meeting and gave an update on our FY20 budget and discussed beginning prelimination, preliminary of the FY21 budget, so a lot of meetings. And I, we have the policy, those of you that are on Policy Subcommittee, we set that for November 13th, sorry, November 14th at 6:30. I believe that's Beth, John, and Carrie.
At night?
6:30 at night, not in the morning, I know.
I don't know whether, you're an early person.
I could do it at 6:30 in the morning.
Excellent. Any comments for members who are at any of these subcommittee meetings? Mrs. Gallivan?
I would just want to say, with the superintendent evaluation, what we wanted to do is we wanted to set a tone of no surprises, basically, and give Dr. Goff feedback early in the year. So we're getting close to that point, and I think that after the meeting on Monday, we'll have an agreement in terms of what some priorities are. There's a tool that we all have to use when it comes to November, I mean, when it comes to the end of the, the year, but we should familiarize ourselves with that. But if anybody has anything that they want to bring to Dr. Goff's attention, sooner rather than later is the fairest way to do it.
That would be helpful.
So, you know, it's Beth, myself, and Bill who are the representatives, but, you know, I mean, you guys can all pick up the phone and talk to her directly or talk to us, but we just want to set a fair process, and that's kind of the, the whole idea of meeting frequently till we get that sort of worked out.
That's great, Nancy, thanks.
Further comments?
Anything on legislative?
Yes, yes.
You want to start, no?
Yes.
We've got really big news on the legislative front. The Mass House and Senate have unanimously passed the Student Opportunity Act, which is, there, it... which is, it's the culmination of years' worth of work. There's one significant difference between the version that was passed in the Senate and the version that was passed in the House. And it does not have to do with money, which is a good thing. It has to do with whether or not the Commissioner of Education has, how much power the Commissioner has for districts that are not making significant improvement. And that means that this piece of legislation has to go to a conference committee where a few members of each branch will iron that piece out. The reason I say the good news is that it's not about money is because sometimes that, there just isn't enough and you can't get beyond it. I think that the general, the general feeling from both branches is this is a super important piece of legislation and we're not going to drag each other down over it. So the hope crossing our fingers is that the legislation will be on the governor's desk before Thanksgiving, which would be tremendous. So to explain a little bit what it is, it's a major update and a renewed commitment from the state legislature to partner with cities and towns to fund public education. It comes with a $1.4 or $1.5 billion price tag. It's a huge, it's a huge statement about who is representing us in the legislature. We've been asking them to do this for a very long time and they've been very afraid of this large price tag. But this bill passed unanimously in both houses, which is fantastic. I believe it's going to go a long way to keep Massachusetts public schools among the best in the country and in the world. It's the answer to like years' worth of advocacy. And in the last, the last month, there have been a number of high school juniors and seniors that have met with Bill and myself. And it reminds me of the fact that we started with having student advocacy in 2003. And this is how long it has taken and there have been a number of students that have, have learned from this along the way. So it's, it's really something to celebrate. I also would have to mention that Dr. Lynch did so much advocacy work. And it's a celebration of his work. The, the dollar amount that will come to Wapo, it is all based on estimates. And you can't like look at it as a 100% promise because the things, first of all, the, the implementation of this act will take seven years. So, you know, what we're talking about is that the district will change over that amount of time. And in recent years, we've been experiencing declining enrollment. So the state was doing their calculations, thinking that maybe we'll continue to decline. With all the, the building that we have going on in town, we don't really expect that to be the case. So, but it looks like in round numbers that our Chapter 70 money will increase by about $750,000 over seven years. Two really important pieces of this are that our charter school reimbursement will just about double. It's a big commitment that the state is willing to make. And we've been pushing for this again for a very long time. Representative John Rogers in particular, but all of our representatives have worked hard on the circuit breaker, the special education circuit breaker reimbursement that we get. And this legislation says that it will include the transportation costs related to the special ed students that qualify. And the estimate there is an additional $445,000. So we're talking real money for a town like ours. The largest percentage of the money will certainly go to the gateway cities who need it the most. But it, my fear in the first place was it might have been all about the gateway cities and it's not. It does benefit our towns like ours as well. So we don't know exactly for the, we don't know for sure the next steps, but we're working to have the legislators come into Wapo on Tuesday night, November 5th. And I'm not sure whether a 6:30 meeting time is going to work, but stay tuned. I'll let everybody know. That's what we're working for, is working to have them come at 6:30. And then we would go briefly to the Board of Selectments meeting before we head over to the high school for our meeting that starts at 7:30. But it's a huge piece of celebration that they, they really deserve an awful lot of credit because I think, I think that it will be one of the, one of the proudest votes that they've taken in, in the end. It's a big deal.
Very good. That about sums it up. So just, I think to your point about the optimism, I think everyone saw how close we came and how it died in conference committees so.
Last year.
Last year. So I think that really is on folks' minds. And now that I think Senator Sonia Ching Diaz today said, you know, everyone's got the taste of it in their mouth. And so they know that we're so close that I'm, I'm, from an inside perspective, I think, you know, the people I talk to, they're very heartened that the oversight piece with the Commissioner is not going to be a, a long-term stumbling block. So that's good stuff. Moving fast along to citizens' comments.
Your money's worth.
So I'm Alan Cameron. I live at 28 Berkeley Drive. So I haven't been to a school committee meeting since I got off the committee. So it's great to see my, my former colleagues and the new folks. Welcome. And I appreciate all that all of you do to keep the schools running so well. And Mary and Mike, it's great, great to see you guys too. I've been meaning to come in because I wanted to compliment you on, on two hires, Dr. Goff and Mr. Han, both of whom are outstanding educational leaders. I've known Dr. Goff personally and professionally since 2003. And she is luminary in the education world. She's a real asset to the district. And we are very lucky to have her as superintendent. So thank you for that hire. Mr. Han, I haven't known him as long. I served on his hiring committee when he was principal at Johnson. But I've had two kids go through the school with him. My daughter calls him Mr. Hands-on Learning because he was always so visible and out there. I think he'll do an outstanding job as a leader of curriculum, as evidenced by the presentations here today with the ELA. As your presenters were going through, I was thinking about some of the things I know about ELA professionally and hearing about the nonfiction, the move for equity, the move for more diversity in representative literature in high school is spot on. And Lucy Cawkins Reader's Workshop is, you know, that's the primo program format to use with students, elementary students for literacy instruction. And Foundations is a great phonics program. So clearly you're doing some excellent work. And I appreciate that and all you do for us. And thank you.
Thank you for taking the time, Alan.
May I say something?
You can always come back and say good things.
And since you're the reason I'm here, because I think you told me an indoor soccer. It's a couple meetings a month. That's it. I thought it was covering one year of your term, a couple meetings a month. Six years later. Had me several meetings.
Thank you.
Never agree to anything on a soccer field. That's a good. Moving quickly along. Thank you all. Any further questions, comments? Excellent. Warrants.
I have a lot of them tonight. I will make a motion to approve the following payroll warrants from September 19th, 2012 PA, and from October 3rd, 2014 PA for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second by Ms. Syrek. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the following accounts payable warrants from September 26th, 220013, from October 3rd, 220014, from October 10th, 220015, and from October 17th, 220016 for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second by Ms. Syrek, who continues to beat Mr. Breen. Six zero zero. Moving on to donations. Would someone like to take the gift and donation approval?
I'll make a motion to accept the following gifts and donations to Boydens School from the Boydens School PAC for technology in the amount of $1,835. To Boydens School from the Boydens School PAC for playground equipment in the amount of $241. To Fisher School and Old Pulse Road School from Bay State Textiles Recycling, the amount of $80. To all schools, not including Feeny, Junior Women's Club of Wapo Nurse Supplies, the amount of $1,400. To Byrd Middle School from the State Street Foundation Museum of Fine Arts Enrichment Program in the amount of $2,000. And Systemwide from the Wapo Women's Club donation in the amount of $300.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero. We thank all these community members for their very generous donations. Finally, approval of minutes. Would someone like to take the minutes?
Sure. I'm going to make a motion to approve the following minutes from the Budget Workshop Meeting, October 10th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
A motion to approve the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee Meeting on October 1st.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
Motion to, do you want me to?
The Special Ed Subcommittee.
To the Special Ed Subcommittee Meeting Minutes for September 26th.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
Regular school committee meeting minutes for September 26th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
And the Curriculum Subcommittee Meeting Minutes for October 3rd.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
I did executive session first because I had the.
Budget.
I thought you did the budget workshop, but you didn't do the executive session yet.
The motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes for October 10th.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Donizio. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.